All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a vice president then would be?
Mr. Calhoun.
Brad Calhoun.
No, Calhoun. Calhoun don't want the ball.
So, do we need a motion second for the vice president?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Jay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
You can, but you're not gonna win.
Now, you wanna just take over and go right here?
Yeah, what I'm gonna do, yeah, the first thing I'm gonna do as president is let Brad run this first meeting. Brad, you wanna just, uh, I'm gonna step out. What I'm gonna do, step out and get a phone call or something.
Alright, you got the page.
Yeah, I don't have, I think this is, I don't think I have the, uh, planning commission docket.
Oh, yeah, we don't have that.
Actually, I don't either. For some reason, I didn't either.
Where is, uh, where's Jen said her?
Renee, we don't have them. Yeah, I didn't even have one, just, we're not just passed.
Slay gave me one. Think she's gotten one. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we good to go. Now.
This is not gonna be, it'll be what I mean here. I'm missing something, no. Just one. We share.
Here, here's the next page.
Is that the next page?
Uh-uh. There's the second page.
I got it now, Jay.
Hey, I'm, um, hey, Slay, I wanna, um... Hey, Slay, I wanna change one thing up, kind of, first. I know in the hallway out there, just for the matter of getting people through and getting people, uh, not just stagnating outside in the lobbies, to go ahead and jump a little bit on the agenda just for a second.
Yes.
I wanna go ahead and do that public comment on the, uh, the shooting range on Shallow Road.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of people here for that.
Yes.
So, I wanna have that first, just so I don't have a lot of people congregating in the office. So, that's gonna kinda curveball me right there.
Yeah, that's fine. We need to recess the planning commission. Open the board agenda.
And I'll come back. Is that okay, Mr. Renee? I just don't want a lot of people gathering outside, if we can keep from it.
I make a motion that we recess and go, uh, back to the board agenda.
Okay, so, got a motion by Mr. Gaines to recess into the regular meeting, and then we'll come back to the planning commission.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Alright.
Any opposed with a like sign. So, we'll go into the, uh, quarter supervisors meeting. Mr. Renee, we're gonna come back to you. I'm sorry, I just wanna get that done as quick as I can for people.
Here's the minutes.
So, uh, plus that gives Janice time to find the minutes, you know? So, the first thing is public comment. Does somebody wants to speak to Mr. Thrash and bring him in, or the people that's gonna be dealing with, uh, or having that discussion?
He's ready, he can come on up if he can.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? If you would, just introduce yourself to us.
Okay, I'm Josh Thrash, I live out on Shallow Road in the Shallow community.
Josh, is anybody else out there?
Just me, just me.
Okay.
Just me. Um, I wanted to address the board on the, uh, issue of the firing range out on Shallow Road that, um, talked to several people that live around there. Of course, I live on Shallow Road. I don't live close to where the proposed firing range is. We do have some property across Shallow Road from it. But, um, I would like to ask the board to consider looking for an alternative place. I think there's better places in Rankin County that are more rural. I'm all for the sheriff department having what they need to better do their job, but I don't think that's a good place. I think several reasons. You've got, some of the people that live around there, you've got four residences within a couple hundred yards, about 250 yards of the proposed range. Then you've got 18 different residences down Mandy Drive, which is to the north, excuse me, to the east of the range, which I'm assuming that would be the direction that they would be firing. I understand there's gonna be a berm, it'll probably be safe, but the noise is gonna be pretty rough. There's six people right across Shallow Road. Talked to, I've talked to four different people around there, nobody's in favor of it being there. If I need to, I can, I can bring more people up here to speak to you. I came today on my own, I just got on the agenda yesterday, so it was kinda last minute. I understand why you've looked at that area, I understand that. I don't know if there are any other options. Many people asked me about living out on Shallow Road, do I know of any property for sale? So, you might wanna look at selling that tract, looking for a better place to put it. But, I would ask that you reconsider based on the facts that I presented. I just think there's too many people that live close by. I think the noise, you've got a church pretty close there across from Sha- across Shallow Road from the range, the proposed range. The Allens who live here in Brandon on 60 acres adjacent to it, they'd be a nice home place for somebody down the road. I seriously doubt it will be if there's a firing range next door. Same scenario for us, I've got three children, I'd love for 'em to live close to home, and that 70 acres that we own across the road'd be a great place for 'em. And I don't want 'em having to live within a quarter mile of a firing range. So, that's really all I had. No animosity toward anybody, just strictly asking you from a business standpoint if you would look into other options.
Thank you for your comments.
Will you help us look into other options?
And let the sheriff speak.
Number one, you know, they built that police academy out there, and that's what we're having to use right now, we have to follow their rules and regulations. And, you know, we're up to 120 acres right now, but they built subdivisions all up around it. Now, those folks complain sometimes about it, but, I mean, it did affect the houses being built, the subdivisions coming in around the police academy, because of the live oaks, Patrick Farms, all those. But it, I guess, what I want you to understand is, this isn't gonna be something that's going on every single day. All, all the deputies have qualified four times a year. So, that's one day for all employees, one day a year. Then the SWAT team's gonna qualify, shoot some once a month. And then tw- I'm gonna say two to four times a year, we'll have a night shoot. When I say night shoot, it'll be as soon as the sun goes down, they'll shoot at night. So, you're not even talking 20 days, 25 days a year. But now, what we're gonna do is offer it to 4H, ROTC, and everybody else, you're talking about 22 rides and stuff. I mean, there's not gonna be machine guns going off at there, and big explosions, it's, you see how hard it is to get ammo right now? We actually skipped last time because of ammo shortage.
Right.
So, it's not gonna be something that's going on every single day out there. Now, if we have somebody struggling with their weapon, you might hear a song during the week or something like that, you know, just one person out there shooting. But, we, we don't have the, the time or money to go out there every single day and burn all our animals. So, it's not gonna be anything like the state academy out there, it's not gonna be out there every day. So, I, I, actually, it was maybe a couple of days a month, you're not even gonna notice that.
Yeah. I'm not against, I'm not against y'all having it, I just, you know.
Well, the thing is, Josh, I mean, the county doesn't own a lot of property throughout the county.
Right.
I mean, and this is a piece of property that's just been sitting there baking, and, and, I mean, we just felt like...
This helps you, any, I went there and looked, if there's a residence, if you face east, there's a residence right there. If we face north, the way I'm looking at it, it's a couple of miles from the house, that way, if there's a spray round that goes over. So, I'm talking about, the firing range would be 40 dollars.
Right.
So, that would cut down on the safety issues, that'd bother me, houses being so close to it.
Yeah, really, the noise is more the concern than the safety. I know you guys would do what you need to do, I mean, I know y'all well enough to know you'd be safe with it. I'm not worried necessarily about a safety aspect. It's the surrounding people and just the noise factor. I can hear the training academy from my office, and my office is across from Crossgate's latest.
They shoot a whole lot more than we'll ever be shooting.
Yeah, I get that.
But, and we're back up, we're over in office, the brand Pearl, Richmond has their own, uh, reservoir, so, still, I'm talking at the top, you're talking about five, six days a month, somebody may be out there during the day. And I'm saying four times a year, you'll hear somebody shooting at night, and it's gonna be, you know, six, seven, eight o'clock at night, and it's not gonna be two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And one thing, one thing also, Malota, kinda what Sheriff's talking about, they shoot lots of people. So, when their range goes out to shoot, they shoot 50 to 60 people.
They shoot 80 out there.
Yeah, so, our numbers are smaller, a lot smaller than that. So, the amount of shooting people-wise on those ranges far exceed where our small ones gonna be, I guess.
Right.
If you wanna call it small.
And like I said, you wouldn't want to offer it to the children, right?
We do.
Somewhere for them, you can shoot.
4H.
Yeah, 4H, or the, skip the archer, anybody, they just have something that our children would do also.
And one of the things is, we discussed it as well, in one, in planning, we had tried to do everything we can in the setup and the design and where it goes to help, to help dampen the sound as much as possible.
Yeah. Steve, we talked about, you know, North Rankin County, some of the IP land, it's pretty rural, more rural than, than Shallow Road. You know, we all know there's some places that would be, you know, less impactful to the people that live around them than, than where this one's going. So, I, I, you know, I understand, we, Brad and Steve, we both talked about, y'all did a good job of telling me exactly what, you know, the sheriff said here this morning, but, um, you know. I personally, and I know some of the surrounding people, I've talked to two of the Dixon brothers, I talked to Doug Garbutt, lives across, across the street. You know, I didn't try to push my agenda, because I live a good ways from it. The property we have there is uninhabited at the time. But they had the same thoughts that I did. So, Dixon's property pretty much borders it on two sides. So, yeah, that's my thoughts on it.
We definitely appreciate you coming and talking to us. We'll have more discussions.
I will explore that on the other end of the county. Just have to see, I mean, it'd be closer to me. I would, I would like it, but we just have to see what we can do. And, and, and what you brought to us today has been taken well.
Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. President, we recess now back to the planning commission.
Yeah, so, we'll entertain a motion to recess back into the planning commission.
So, move.
So, a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. So, Mr. Renee, we're back into you. We're gonna open up the, uh, planning commission again, and we'll let you, uh, walk us through the agenda, so...
Motion to approve the minutes.
So, we got a motion to approve the minutes under item two by Mr. Bishop. Second by myself, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Any old business, Mr. Renee, I don't see anything on the list. So, we'll move into item four under new considerations, so you can address item number one.
Alright, so, the first item under, um, new considerations is a conditional use permit for Curtis Clearman at 113 Rankin Road. Mr. Clearman is seeking the conditional use for an, um, he's converting an existing pole barn into a residential home on this property. It's a 15.25 acre parcel, and it's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. He needs a conditional use because the exterior, uh, will be metal, and that's not allowed in the RE1 zone. This is a, um, picture of the building when he came in for the permit. And then these are views of that property. And these are surrounding properties.
Alright, does the board wish to entertain a motion to set a hearing or not for item number one?
Motion.
A motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item number one passes. Item number two, Mr. Renee.
Alright, the next item is a conditional use permit for One Hope LLC at 1896 Highway 471. One Hope is seeking the conditional use permit to operate a day center for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is a 1.42 acre parcel, it's zone C2. This use is allowed in any zoning district subject to a conditional use permit. That's an aerial view of the property. There's an existing home on this property that has been used as a, um, business office for several years. And, um, One Hope was previously approved at 100 Castlewood Boulevard, and they're wanting to relocate to this property on Highway 471. This is a view of that property and the, um, building.
Motion set, second.
So, a motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item number two passes. Item number three, Mr. Renee.
Okay, is a rezoning request for Dependable Financial Services LLC on Woodrow Martin Road. Uh, they are seeking to rezone a 31.2 acre parcel from A2 to RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. They plan to develop the property into three lots, the smallest lot being 9.18 acres. Uh, the proposed lots will front on the public road and exceed the 100-foot minimum lot width required by the RE1 zone. The developer, uh, plans to place deed restriction on, on the property, um, minimums heated and cooled square footage, 1,800 square feet. There'll be 150-foot front setback. Uh, accessory structures must be placed behind the home. There can be no further subdividing of the three lots without board approval, and manufactured homes and mobile homes will be prohibited. I'm not sure if Mr. Sowell is here today or not, um, if you have any questions for him.
I'll make a motion, set.
Alright, so, a motion by Mr. Calhoun to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Did we miss something?
Yeah, I just wanna ask a clarifying question, did they carve that corner out?
Wait, yes, it's out.
It's not on the request, it's all I need to know.
Alright, so, item number three, set for a public hearing. Item number four, Mr. Renee.
Alright, uh, the next item is a conditional use permit for Hercules Concrete Pumping Incorporated on South Pearson Road. Ray Carr with Hercules Concrete Pumping is seeking the conditional use permit to build an office with a shop. Uh, this is a 12.31 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1A. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is his preliminary site plan. Now, he wants to see if he can be approved for this use before he gets detailed drawings. He's proposing construction of an 11,200-square-foot metal building with the office area in the front and the shop in the rear. Uh, the business currently has nine trucks that will be parked behind the buildings. He said that he was gonna put a fence along the front of the property and keep the existing tree line buffer on the sides and the rear. And he is here today, I believe, if y'all have any questions for him. This is a view of that property, it was an old dirt pit. And then this is the surrounding property.
Have you talked to anybody out in the area about putting this going in? I mean, personally, I don't have a real problem. I know one time, Jay, what was it, when you, you reported, when you had that district, or they wanted to put a, something to do with dismantling, uh, trailers or something in it?
Yeah, they were, they were gonna be storing and working on trailers.
Yeah, what?
Eighteen-wheelers.
It's in the similar area of proximity, I think.
I thought that was by the cotton market, but I guess that would be.
Yeah. How far is this from the cotton market?
Only two miles.
Huh?
Couple of miles, maybe a mile and a half.
Really? Going back toward Pearl?
It's on the very north end of it.
Is that the, is that across the street, is that the Wells property across the road?
This one is...
Uh, the Wells property is probably a quarter of a mile.
So, they're on up on the right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, is this, is this where the big house is, that's right to the corner?
Top of the hill.
East Petros?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, West, West Petros?
Uh, West Petros.
Yeah. Okay, so, where, where are you talking about putting it in reference to this house here?
The, uh, the hall's...
It's gonna be on the same side of the road, is that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't really have a...
It's a dirt pit currently.
Yeah. Yeah, it was...
Across the road.
Huh?
Across the road, is that the hall's dirt pit? And then this is directly across from it.
Okay. I mean, I, I think you go ahead and, you know, set the public hearing and see. I, I don't really have a problem, I don't know what the, I just know, but it was closer to the cotton market, they had a problem, uh, with this, uh, trailer dismantling or something they were gonna do.
I know, their, their office has been, well, my office, you'd be by their ears, three years.
Yeah, oh, I know, I know who you are and where you are, but, yeah, I'm just thinking what the people may say, if, and wondering if you'd talk to anybody. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go and set the public hearing, let's try it and see.
Alright, that's your motion, set the public hearing. So, a motion by Mr. Morrison, set the public hearing, second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. So, item four, set for a public hearing. Item number five, Mr. Renee.
Alright, uh, it's a conditional use permit for Yanni and Amy Diaz at 421 East Petros Road. Uh, they are seeking the conditional use permit to operate a sawmill to cut wood for their pallet business, which is located in Jackson. It's called YNA Pallet Sales. Uh, this is a 34.98 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1A. Uh, that's an aerial view of the property. Uh, this is a family-owned business, only family members will be working on the property. They have log trucks, uh, that, in my understanding, she was saying, would bring the logs in for processing, and then they would pick up the wood and deliver it to, uh, the pallet company in Jackson, where the pallets would be assembled. Their proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. They have this existing pole barn on the property that they want to put the machine under, one of the machines. And then they also, in the future, would like to add a 40-by-70 pole barn for additional machines. They own an adjoining property to this piece, uh, that's 31.98 acres as well. These are views of that property. And then these are surrounding properties. Mrs. Diaz is here today, if you have questions for her.
Yeah, um, a couple of concerns I have, I mean, there again, we can try this and see, I'm not sure how the people are gonna feel. It's kind of a, um, quiet area, I mean, it's kind of off the beaten path, 'cause it's a dead end going into it. So, they're not used to a lot of traffic. And the other concern I have is, um, the problem with, is how the road's gonna hold up, because that's not a heavyweight road. That's mostly, well, you, live on it, you know what it is. And so, I'm a little concerned on how the roads can hold up on log trucks coming in with logs and, and that heavier, uh, type truck going in and out. It'll be more frequent than it has been in years, uh, going out. And that's, that's probably one of my biggest concerns, even if we don't get a pushback from the people that live there. So, that, that's something that'll have to be addressed somewhat, I think, down the road for sure, as a condition.
Yes.
So, that does bother me.
Alright, you wish to set the public hearing?
So, with that being said, sure, if you, please, come up here. Just if you would.
The address, it's not 421, that's our other address down the street. It's 451 East Petros, that's the address in question for the shop. Um, and the trucks, it's not gonna be an everyday type of thing. It's only, we built enough materials at one time to where it'll last us a, a good while, um, because we're gonna break literally a log truck. Um, so, it's gonna be enough to last us, you know, weeks or a few months, but, you know. Like I said, we've talked to, we've been there a while. Um, our brother-in-law lives in a trailer on our property.
Right.
So, we've been there a while, we're, we're done work out there before, we've cleared the property with our tractors, with our bulldozers. None of the neighbors have, they've not complained, and we've asked them, and they, nothing.
Okay.
Um, they're all really nice neighbors, as long as we...
Yeah, I know several down through there.
We don't live there ourselves, uh, we live off Poplar Street. But, um, like I said, our dump trucks are out there, we've cleared all the property that we own, that we've bought in the last few months. So, we haven't had any complaints with the noise, or, 'cause we don't work, you know, we, we're respectful to the neighbors, we start when we know everybody's up, and then we stop when, you know, dusk, or not really that, but...
Well, like I said, I, I, we're gonna set the public hearing and see how they feel. Sometimes they don't feel bad to realize, and, and who knows? But, the, the road is a concern.
Yeah, that is a concern.
It is, it's a little, it's a small road, and it is a concern, it's not built for heavy traffic at all.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, but, um...
Alright, well, thank you for your comments.
And we'll, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion, go and set the public hearing.
Okay, so, a motion by Mr. Morrison, set the public hearing, second by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion?
Please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. So, item five is set. Item six, Mr. Renee.
Alright, um, this is a conditional use permit for Altail Corporation doing business as Verizon Wireless. Um, they're seeking the conditional use permit, uh, for a 160-foot monopole cell tower to be placed on this property. It's a 1.51 acre parcel, it's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan, um, it shows the lease area here, the tower will be in this area. And it's, uh, approximately 105 feet off of Grant's Ferry Road. This is a more detailed site plan, you can see the tower, um, design here. It will be, or it is going to be designed to allow additional carriers to co-locate on the tower. And the application stated that they would, um, keep some of the existing hardwoods in the front and on the rear and sides to help shield the site from view and better blend in with the landscape. There won't be any lighting required on the tower per the FAA. And we have received a letter from Verizon, Verizon stating they would allow the county to place emergency equipment on the tower if needed at no cost, cost to the county.
Alright, Josh, with that, so they, they are agreeing as part of the application to allow co-location at no cost to the county. That's, that's an important consideration that we tried to help folks with and introduce. Whenever we get these tower applications like this, they're always conditional uses. We, we want them to indicate in writing that the county can co-locate on any tower at no cost to the county.
Alright, and, um, David McGee, he is here today, if y'all have any questions. This is a view of that property on Grant's Ferry. And then these are surrounding properties.
Okay, what about, uh, setting aside funds for whenever they wanna move it? How the funds available, take it down?
Yeah, but, I think we need, at least we need something in writing acknowledging and indicating that, that the, uh, that the applicant, this is important. And so, and since the representative is here, I want him to hear this. Uh, what we, what happens in a lot of these situations is, the, uh, the tower manufacturer, the, uh, the entity that's responsible for erecting the tower, will enter into a long-term lease agreement with the actual property owner for the site, okay? And so, uh, what happens, or what I'm, what we have thought about in, uh, in prior situations is, what happens if the tower is ever abandoned? What, what can happen there is that the owner, the property owner, is now stuck with a tower that could potentially, if it goes without maintenance, could potentially become a hazard or liability. And so, we want a clear understanding with the applicant, that if that tower is ever abandoned, the applicant is responsible to remove the tower.
I have a copy of the contract, and that's in there.
Alright.
Uh, and the timeline.
We just wanna make clear, I don't want the owner of the property saddled with the obligation to remove that tower. You'd be amazed at how much it costs to bring one of those down. So, I, that, that needs to be really clear on our condition, in addition to being in the application or in the contract, it needs to be a condition to your authorization for it to be located there.
Okay. Alright, so, entertain a motion for setting the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Calhoun.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. So, item six passes. And we'll have those wordings, I think, reflect in, in kind of the description of that, Mr. Renee, when it comes up, so... Alright, all new considerations complete? Let's go into item number five, site plan architectural review, item number one.
Alright, so, this is a site plan architectural review for Don and Heather Clyburn on Loughlin Road. Uh, you may remember that in March of this year, they were approved, they had, uh, asked, they had some preliminary information, and they had asked to be approved to have a wedding venue on this property. Uh, it was approved March 15th of this year. Uh, it's a 40-acre parcel, it's zoned, uh, A1. That's an aerial view of the property. And this is their site plan, the building will sit approximately 1,160 feet off of Loughlin Road. This is a more detailed, uh, it's a 5,000-square-foot building, it's gonna be metal with some wood. They have, they show a detention area on the property as well, and Tim, uh, is working with the engineer, uh, to get that approved. I think he needed some additional information. This is the picture that she had provided us, uh, when we, when she first came and applied. And then these are the... And then these are the elevations of the building. She's here today if you have any questions for her. Clyburn's own three of the four surrounding properties. And this is a view of that property. It will be a crushed limestone driveway and parking area also.
I don't have any questions. Y'all, I appreciate y'all working with the community. Thank you.
All right. Slade, do we need, do we need to?
Do they own the access?
They do.
Yeah, they own everything, everything there.
Slade, do we need to make a motion, need to approve it, or just look at it and acknowledge it? On the chair, it's good?
Yes, please. Subject to the approval of the drainage by Mr. Walker.
All right. Well, I'll make that motion to approve it, subject to the approval of any drainage.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Morrison to approve. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the like sign.
Thank you. See you later.
Item one passes. Moving into nuisance property hearings under item six, number one, Ms. Renee. All right, I'm sorry. We're gonna transfer this over to Mr. Slade.
That ends up being me. First item.
Item number one.
Yeah. The first item is Helen and Tony Bowles, nuisance property at three thirteen Bover Road. This is District One property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for anyone who is here on behalf of, for Helen and Tony, on behalf of Helen and Tony Bowles, to be prepared to come forward. Renee, if you'll demonstrate with the photos, please.
All right. So we received a complaint on June the eighteenth of this year in regard to rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. These pictures were taken on the twenty-fourth of June. Kathy did receive a call from the owner who said that he had lost his shop in May, that he had brought tools and vehicles there to the property. And he had some flooding issues in the backyard that he was gonna be trying to work on, and he would get the inoperable vehicles fixed and cleaned up. These pictures were taken on the first of September, yesterday.
All right.
All right. You'll come up?
Hey, if you would, when you come up, just introduce yourself to the board with your address, please.
Hey.
Morning.
I'm Tony Bowles, actually, Waddell now. Um, okay, the, it's a lot different this morning, actually, because he was up all night putting the fence up and fixing everything. All of those vehicles right there in the front row, the two old body style Chevys right there are antiques. Those are actually going to be show trucks. That's why I bought a cover because Ms. Kathy told me last year, as long as it had a cover, it was fine. As far as the picture that was on the end, okay.
That one, yeah.
Oh, those, yeah, the two white, the two trucks right there are show trucks. That's our daughter's car. That's my husband's Chevy. That's the old truck bed in the back in case to replace the bed on one of the others. The little white car behind the edge of the fence right there is my seventy-year-old mother's. She has not come to the terms yet. She has cognitive function issues that she was diagnosed with two weeks ago. So I'm trying to talk her into selling that car. The two vehicles right there in front of the fence is the two customer vehicles we had to bring from his shop because we had to have everything out by May thirty-first.
I've never been paid on those vehicles.
So they've gotten to be finished.
I've got to finish them so I don't get sued up.
Right. That's, that's it as far as anybody else's vehicles. Everything else there belongs to us.
All right. The white, the truck that's behind, kinda sort of fence, in the hole where the fence, kinda.
The old body style Chevy, the white one.
Right.
That is actually going to be his work truck. The transmission went out on it, what, three months after getting it?
Yeah.
So he's gotta replace the transmission in it so he can put his blue truck up, the one to the left of the picture right there. That's his show truck. That's being resorted for a show truck, but he's having to drive it for everything else at the moment.
All right. Zoom that one up, Renee.
I'm sorry?
Zoom that picture up. Brighter minute ago about it. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, okay.
Touch your screen and see if you can.
No, that's fine. That's, that's the one I was talking about. All right. Can you not clean up the stuff that's right in front of the white truck?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, stuff like that yesterday, we have, but actually, they didn't even show the other half of the yard where we finished, he stayed up last night finishing the fence.
Well, I think, yeah.
That's the end of our house down here. There's.
I know where you live. I know exactly.
That's just the trampoline turned upside down so it didn't get blown over by the storm.
All right.
And then the front of the house, the stuff right there on the porch.
Right.
That's all gonna be moved by this weekend.
If not.
If not today, yeah.
Okay, 'cause, you know, you've had the vehicles there since, what, May something? You're still gonna fix them, and here we are, September. So that's what the people, whoever's complaining.
I know who it is.
That's, well, whoever, it doesn't matter to me. It's just something we have to address when it comes up, and our, our people do what they have to do, as I talked, told you the other day on the phone. But that's what they're gonna say. Well, it's September. They're still not, how much longer are they gonna sit there? And I can understand their, I understand that completely.
Well, we also have plans as money provides. We're gonna add on to the end of the house, provided it'll be approved, and do a two-car carport.
Yeah.
To enclose right there for two vehicles parked.
Well, I'm, I mean, that's down the road, but I'm just saying what we're dealing with today.
Which, on that end, right there where the white truck is, I'm bringing the fence, eight, eight more feet that way, and I'm gonna go down between the two vehicles with fence until we do the carport.
Okay, when, when is this gonna happen, though? Because see, you see, you gotta see my point and their point, you know?
Within the next two weeks on the fence.
It's just money-wise, that's the, that's the big issue.
I understand. It's just from their, I mean, I understand whenever this started, and actually, it's been some calls on it. I found out, like, prior last year, I think. And so this is kind of been ongoing. And so we, we have to have something done as results to, otherwise, it's gonna keep on being a problem. So, um.
Can we show you some pictures of the problem this morning?
Huh?
Can we show you some more pictures from this morning of the work that's been done?
Well, it's on the phone. I can't get them on my, I think.
I think, I think the issue here, the, the issue is that this, that the, the cycliness of this property is not just a twenty-twenty-one issue, because all the way back to nineteen, we've had issues of complaints about the condition of this property going all the way back to nineteen. We have evidence in our file where we have worked this as a nuisance property since that point. This, this continues to be an issue that, that derives additional neighbor complaints fairly consistently. So this is just the most recent iteration of condition, of a condition of the property that is unsightly. Okay?
Yeah, I had something?
So pictures of what we've done today is helpful. The issue becomes, how do we manage to keep this property cyclic going forward? And one of the ways we do that is we don't, we don't fix and work on vehicles at this location. We, we do our best to keep whatever cycliness issues behind the fence where we can. We make it so that as neighbors drive by, they're not confronted with the cycliness issues. That, that's how we address this. So.
Okay.
Well, we're still gonna work on vehicles. That's just what, what we do, but it'll be behind the fence.
Well, I guess what you're saying is it can't be out visible on the front side of things, right? And it's not a shop, right? It's a residence, so.
And the main reason that the one car was at the front door, that's the main one they're complaining about, is because our land stays so wet from the ditch in the back.
Gotcha.
And the flooding in the back. We can't even use the back half of our property.
Right. Yeah, we talked about that.
We may have a little bit of confusion over the fact that we're operating apparently a commercial repair facility.
No, we're not.
Yeah, in a residence.
Yeah. So I heard customers, and we're working on customer vehicles. That starts to appear to me to be a commercial operation. The solution, by the way, to get to the bottom of that is not for you guys. That, that's for you guys to ask your justice court judge to get involved, make a determination as to whether or not there's a potential zone violation. So it becomes, it, it becomes a way to be resolved if we keep the neighbors from complaining, giving the neighbors an excuse to complain. If we can eliminate that, which means just keep the place clean, right, then there's no reason for us to ask the justice court judge to get involved and look at whether or not we're operating a commercial business out of a, out of a zoning context that doesn't allow for that. We can eliminate a lot of the friction and the problems just by being neighborly.
Okay. All right. Thank you guys for your comments this morning. How do you wanna go?
Well, this is what I'm asking. All right.
The nineteen deal, uh, the same guy that's complaining now got mad because I started doing my metal roof, ran into an issue, and I had to back up a little bit. So I had metal beside the house that was in a neat stack. He'd come around about every three days, "Hey, man, when you gonna do your roof? When you gonna do your roof? I'm tired of looking at it. When you gonna do your roof?" It was the same guy that, when we had tried to clean up the property, my nephew last year was cutting brush and everything. He'd come back in my yard shaking his finger in my nephew's face and cussing. I mean, at every turn.
At this point, where we are here, I mean, I understand that's the past and all that. And, but we're still at the present from even some from the past. But what I'm, I ask you, how long do you think it's gonna take you to get this cleaned up?
That, that's what I'm saying. That, the only thing that's going right there.
Okay, how, how long you think?
The rest of the fence, by, probably by, over the weekend, maybe two weeks.
This is what, I tell you what, this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna, and I'm gonna explain this, so don't jump up when I say it. We're gonna declare it a nuisance. And what, when we do that, that way, we don't have to go through all this stuff again. But by the time paperwork moves and does all that, you got several weeks go by, weeks, month. And, but we declared a nuisance, and that way, if you don't get it cleaned up, then it will wind up in justice court. But my, while I'm explaining it to you, we do this numerous times on most all of them. We declare them a nuisance. That way, we don't have to start all over again with everything, and you don't have to come back in here and everything. So I think that's the best way to handle this one, because you said you can have it done in a short period of time. So it won't be a problem. By the time that came up, our people would say, "Hey, Judge, it's done. Got it. Looks good," and it would never get there. But so that, that's the best way to handle that for everybody. So we just declared, declared a nuisance, and then you be on, and our people be watching and, and working with you on that.
All right. Thank you for your comments. So I got a motion by Mr. Morrison to declare the nuisance with that stay owner. So.
Second.
Mr. Calhoun seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the like sign? So motion passed. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Item number two, Mr. Slade.
For the record, that public hearing is closed. You may have closed it, but I'm gonna make sure it's closed. Yeah, absolutely. Item number two is the Roger and Deborah Evans, nuisance property, one twenty-one Tammy Avenue. District One parcel will open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. and Ms. Evans or anyone on their behalf to step forward. And Renee, if you will, please demonstrate the photos.
It's just me, though.
Yeah, no, it's not time, it's not time for you to talk yet.
Yeah, just give, give us a second.
All right. So we received a complaint in March of this year about someone living in a camper, inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris. These pictures were taken on March the twenty-fifth. Uh, the owner did call. He told Kathy that they had health issues. They would haul off the old trailers and that no one lived in the camper. The camper is hard-piped. It's not road-ready. And these were the pictures that were taken on the first yesterday.
That white car moved.
Hang on just a second.
Hey, just, give us just a second. She's gonna go through the whole thing, then we'll let you talk, okay? All right. So come on up and tell us about it. Introduce yourself to us and, uh.
I'm Roger Evans. It's me and Deborah Evans. My wife, she died August the sixth.
Is that your, is that your address, one twenty?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And the reason I put that camper there is for, you know, isolation with all this COVID going around and use it as a, what do you call it, quarantine?
Okay.
So I had a party right there. And as you can see, that red car was my wife. I got it. That truck is a friend of mine, business with me, a lady friend. And that, that car is his mine, that blue one. And that truck over there belongs to the guy that lives in my trailer. I got it out of there because it's dilapidated, the roof and everything.
Where do you live?
Huh?
Where do you live?
I live in that camper right there. Well, I'd say, I just had. I just had soda, shirt, and everything. And I got people coming by there, so I wanted to claim a hardship or something, if I could, and leave that camper there, because that's where, the only place I got to go.
When did your wife die?
Just August, uh, last month, August the sixth. And then my sister died COVID on August the sixth.
Both COVID?
And now the wife had a respiratory problem. She was on oxygen and everything. And it got to the point when I went to the ICU, I was in there also with a GI bleed. I have, like I say, I have some health issues. And if I could just, you know, keep the camper there, I thought it was about that. I really need that for medical reasons.
Go back through who lives in what.
Okay. All right. Now, see, that trailer, that's my fourteen-by-eighty trailer there.
Yeah. Is that where you live?
Yeah. And I see the camper's right over here.
He lives in the camper.
That's your girlfriend?
He lives in the camper.
Okay, okay.
Are you renting that other trailer? Are you renting the trailer?
No, I'm letting a friend there. Stay there. The wife wanted him to, you know, be able to stay there. He's got a, you know, several, he's got cars, he's got two cars in the backyard that I need to get pulled out of there. But I'm just saying, as far as the camper, I need that for medical reasons and stuff. And like I said, I could use it as a, as a, what do you call it, a?
Well, the building to the left of the trailer, is it, looks like, I see through the bushes, a white building. Is that a trailer or another camper?
No, that's Wesley's property. I see where that fence is.
No, your property.
Yeah, that, he's probably got a nuisance thing on him because his grass is this high. But I'm just saying, I got some medical.
Where'd you say your girlfriend lived?
Oh, she lives in Hollyglo. She come to see me this week.
Oh, in Hollyglo.
And that truck, that truck will be gone.
Okay, okay.
And that's my wife's car. I got it. See, I have that, those two cars. And he has those two cars. He, I guess he went to work.
Just be careful.
All right, all right. Thank, thank, thank you for your.
You're gonna get the truck gone.
Yeah. Yeah, the truck will be gone. She just visiting me right now. I went up to see her.
The problem, the problem is, and I'll let Mr. Slade address it, but the problem is, you can't live in a camper.
You can't live in the camper.
Oh, I don't know.
We don't, we do not allow a camper to be used as a dwelling in Rankin County. So that's, that's just not an option.
Well, what, well, my thing is, my thing is, if, if somebody's living in a trailer, how come you don't live in the trailer?
Well, he got too nasty in there. I'll go ahead and tell you.
Somebody's living in it.
I ain't gonna live in it. He lives in there. Jim, Jimmy, Lowman is his name. He works at, what's that place out there? Boondocks. He's a weapons instructor and a gunsmith. But yeah, he's nasty, just like my house. He had everything piled up. I couldn't even get through there to the bathroom, just going like this. Anyway, they both, what do you call that, holders?
Yeah.
You know, you know.
I was complaining about the way it looked.
Is, is the guy living in the trailer complaining about, on you?
Well, and the other issue, I guess.
No, I, I don't know who's complaining on me because I've been in there thirty-five years. But I can't live in that camper. I can't not live in it. I can't live on the ground. You know, I'm just saying, I need to have some kind of exemption just for my, but really, I mean, I ain't been here two years from now, so it won't be no problem. If I could just get some kind of.
I don't know.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Diaz, for your comments. All right. So what do you wanna do?
Just declare it. Your.
Huh?
That's what we just need, declare.
Could take that camper.
And just watch it.
Up Yazu County, they don't have zone anything. Move in with this old lady up there.
Did your, did your girlfriend have a place to live?
Excuse me.
Yeah, she lives with her mom in Hollyglo. She's about a delta near the forest.
Well.
I can't live in the trailer. It's, it's, it's just too nasty. He's got cats over there.
You can't make them clean it up?
Well, I've been trying to get on it. He's done a lot, if you notice, around the yard. He's done cleaned up a bunch of that stuff around there.
Kick his butt out.
I, I guess, I guess the main issue right now is the camper. You can't have the camper on site.
Well, see, that's, that's, that's called me a problem. I can't have a camper on my lawn.
All right. We're gonna just, uh, let's just declare the nuisance and let's, uh, it'll, it'll work its way out. It'll work itself out.
All right. So gonna.
It will.
Yeah, just.
It'll be all right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your comments there, Ms. Diaz.
I just need it for right now, just a little while. I'm not gonna.
All right. We're gonna, I'm gonna make the motion, declare this a nuisance.
All right. So we'll, we'll close, we'll close the public hearing, and then Mr. Morrison makes a motion to declare it a nuisance. Is that right?
Right.
Anything else or just that?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back there. You see, you've been doing a lot of work.
Just declaring, all right. All right. So he declares it a nuisance?
We decide, we decide where to go.
The board have a second? Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed with the like sign. So item two.
If you wanna sit here, you can, but if you don't wanna leave, you can go.
Yeah, I gotta go. Yeah, I gotta go get the property, her name off.
I understand. Alright, item number three, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir.
Brad reminded me to close the public hearing, so.
He is my kind of man right there now.
Item number three.
Guarantee I'm related to him.
Item number three. Oh, my word. Gloria Jean Myers, nuisance property at one twenty-nine Congress Drive, is district four property. We'll open that public hearing. I would ask that Ms. Myers or someone on our behalf step forward. Uh, Renee, if you'll please demonstrate with the photos.
Alright, so, uh, we received a complaint about rubbish and debris, dilapidated manufactured homes and weeds and grass on this property.
Yeah, where are you gonna put it?
Uh, June the fifteenth of this year. These are pictures that were taken on the tenth of June. Uh, Kayla Myers called, she said she was working on cleaning up the property, uh, and she said the old mobile home was used as storage. These pictures were taken on September the first.
What's the issue? Is it the one, but you had a separate picture of that, oh, back up, one's right there, is that our issue right there?
Part of it, you know, in the, in the beginning, there was a lot of rubbish and debris out there in front of it as well, uh.
You look like you wanna speak, tell us who you are.
I'm Brianna.
Come on up to the microphone, Brianna, you talk so loud. I'm gonna turn the microphone down so you don't blow us away, but try it again.
Um, I'm Brianna Myers, this is my, was my grandmother's property, she left it to me in her will and, uh, I'm in the process of getting the deed swapped over in my name now. I recently moved back to the property in the past month, this past August, the, well, the end of July, beginning of August. And previously before I lived here, like I said, my dad and his wife Kayla lived here and that was their mess. But since I've been back, as of yesterday, behind this gray Toyota, there's a blue truck that's not running and the motor stripped out of it and there was stuff all over the place. It's been removed and that truck right there, and all this garbage up here has been removed and we've been working on cleaning it. And there's still some like toys and stuff outside because there's kids in the, this trailer down here. And, um, but, well, they're in the process of building their shed bigger to put the toys there and out of the yard. But, and then the trailer, the other trailer, the one in the back, they told my stepmom that if the sinks and bathrooms and stuff were taken out and the window, the busted window was boarded up, that, oh, I'm sorry, the busted window was boarded up, that it would be okay. So that's what we did. And there's no toilets or bathrooms or sinks or anything, and the window that was busted has now gotten, uh.
Who, who told you, who told you that?
My stepmother told me, that's what they told her, I have no idea.
Are you talking about this home?
The storage, for storage.
Yes, for storage.
I never heard that one before.
So, if, if it's rendered not a dwelling, that would solve the issue of having two dwellings on one parcel. My assumption would be that that's probably what that was about. But this is not, this is not a necessarily just a dwelling issue, this, it becomes an unsightlyness issue. So it's not just that it's been rendered not a dwelling, it has to also not be a source.
Yeah.
No, I don't know.
So, that unfortunately, that will draw complaints from the papers just by virtue of its condition. Even though nobody thinks you're living in it, the condition of it's an issue. So it needs to be, uh, it needs a lot of help, uh, to be rendered not an unsightly issue.
Are you wanting to move back to here or are you living there now?
I'm in the process of moving there now, like, I'm remodeling.
So all of this stuff, it's none of yours, it's previous?
Yes.
It, it, yeah.
The, the brown house is the one that I'm in the process of move, that one, that's the one I'm in the process of moving into, but it needs like work on the inside. At this time, I've been staying in the side, inside the home, but I haven't got all of my possessions moved into the home or everything worked on yet.
Where, where's your, where's your father, his wife? Yeah. Are they somewhere on this property?
They were in this trailer right here, they're recent, they're remodeling the inside of it. And it, uh, is, that's technically my property, once everything gets swapped into my name. And then once I get it swapped into my name, I'll have to go through the whole process again of swapping it into their name.
That.
Wait, why don't you leave in there, you're, so you're gonna swap it into their name?
Uh, I'm giving them just the trailer.
So they're living in this trailer?
Yes, it, it doesn't look like that anymore.
Do we have a current picture of that?
I think I have a photo on my cell phone.
So you kinda inherited part of the problem, but is your, is your father and stepmother trying to help you clean up some of this?
Mm-hmm, they are.
Okay.
They've painted their house and cleaned all the, well, the trailer, they've painted the outside of the trailer to make it look better and they've cleaned in front and put new, um, I don't know what that's called, around the.
Skirting.
Skirting.
Mm-hmm.
And gotten all of their stuff.
Is there a way for this, uh, this trailer that's been, that's had the sinks removed? And what, is there a way for that to just be gone? That needs to just go? Because I think that would eliminate some of the issue.
Eventually, yes, like, I can't do it tomorrow, but.
I know that.
No, we, I, I think the plan needs to be for that to just leave the premises?
Yes.
Okay, so if that can be done in a reasonable length of time, uh, that would be one solution.
We're like, can we table it for sixty days?
Yes, revisit the issue, especially, I think it's fair because I think we're really, we're not even sure we're dealing with the actual owner at this point, right? We anticipate that we're dealing with the owner. So I would say, let's get sixty days and get these state issues done, then we'll know who we're dealing with in terms of ownership.
Y'all continue doing what you're doing.
Thank, thank you for your comments, we appreciate you helping to pick it up.
Yeah, continue doing what you're doing.
My name's Brianna, um, the, we, the deed and the will, the will's in my name, but the deed isn't in my name. And it's gonna be like six months to a year before that gets handled.
So somebody's probating your grandmother's.
Uh, I've spoke with a lawyer about it, I'm working on paying him to do it.
These dang lawyers, they get you.
Be, uh, be very careful.
Slay.
You need a lawyer also that can help you in taking care of these matters, okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, and like Craig says, some of this stuff, like that trailer, there's people that will pay you to come get that trailer and remove it.
Yes, sir.
Let's do that, and.
You got any?
You've got something here that could be really valuable, where it's at, uh, just the location.
Yes, sir.
So, don't, don't let someone take advantage of you.
Yes, sir.
You understand what I'm saying? Okay.
And Steve, do you know anybody, you, you, you know a number of somebody that could help move the trailer that she might could get in contact with?
Yeah, but I hate to just give one because this is.
No, I'm just saying later, maybe you had a number and.
Yes, uh, there's people out there.
Right.
That will.
But she may not know how to contact us while getting there.
Hey, get in touch with Renee and I'll give her some numbers.
Right, right.
Uh, people that will help you remove that trailer. Probably won't cost you anything, may even, you may even be able to make some money on it.
Yes, sir.
Just go set it up.
Alright, so that public hearing is closed, thank you for your comments. Mr. Gaines, you decided to table it for sixty days.
Sixty days.
So a motion by Mr. Gaines to table for sixty days.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Just table for sixty days, item three is closed, so moving on to item number four, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir. This will be the John and Michelle Blair, nuisance property of one seventy-eight Bridlewood Drives, District Two property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask either Mr. or Ms. Blair to step forward to speak to the board, uh, and Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
Alright, so we received a complaint on this property, June of twenty twenty, uh, in regard to chickens, uh, being kept on the property. This lot, this property is in Bridlewood subdivision, it's a one point six seven acre parcel, it's zoned R one. Uh, the chickens were removed last year, uh, but it came to our attention, we had another complaint this year and, uh, she, the owner had brought the chickens back to the property. Uh, this is a picture, I believe, of the chicken coop or pen. I guess these pictures were taken last year. These are pictures that were taken September twenty-fifth of this year.
Uh, we hadn't gotten to September twenty-fifth yet.
It's twenty, twenty, it says twenty.
These were the old pictures, I'm sorry.
Hey, do we, do we have any new stuff, Renee?
Kathy said she didn't get any new pictures.
You cannot see it for a moment.
Okay, alright, um, introduce yourself to this, tell us.
Hi, Michelle and Kelvin Blair.
Okay. Tell me about the situation, tell me what's going on.
We, we believe it's actually, see the house on, the White House. Uh, we actually believe it's the previous owners of that home who called in the first place. They know a lot of them live in the state.
Sure.
Um, and we have letters from all of our neighbors in support, um, many of them are actually here with us today.
Yeah.
Um, one of the questions that I had was like, when I looked at the Rankin County webpage, I noticed that there was a Rankin County like complaint form. And it says that Rankin County, uh, will take no action upon complaint forms submitted without accurate identifying information for the complaint. So if I could see, like, the complaints that have been filed first.
Sure.
If that's possible.
So normally Mr. Slay's in here to kind of discuss us on all of our procedures and stuff like that, but, and I guess that's kind of how this thing originated out. First off, the county doesn't go investigating for chickens or whatever kind of animals that are out there, right? And I've spoken to numerous ones of your neighbors, you're well thought of in your neighborhood and, and the community side, I know the kids enjoy the animals and things like that. The problem that falls, that hangs us up, that's got the big dilemma here today, is that you're in a platid subdivision, right? So there, there's issues on having the animals there, right? So, uh, re-ask your question for me and let Slay kind of hear the answer, or hear the question, so he can kind of best articulate your answer for you.
When I was looking at like the Rankin County webpage, the code enforcement, um, I came across a code enforcement complaint form. And it says advisory, the Rankin County Mississippi Office of Community Development will take no action upon complaint form submitted without accurate identifying information. Um, so if I could see those complaints that were pulled out.
So, so I, and I'll give you my interpretation of it, which is not Slay's who knows the right wording and same way with Ms. Renee. That would be to their office as receiving the name of the complainant or the person that called the issue in, right? So they go out and look based on that side of it. So I'm not necessarily sure that it's, it's just some kind of something that comes on the minutes. Normally what people do is they, whenever, uh, have a complaint or an issue, uh, they stay kind of back outside because obviously they don't wanna bring their stuff up, but we don't go searching for that kind of stuff. So it's not something that we release to say, hey, this is the whistleblower here for whatever reason, so.
Like I said, we know, we, we know who it was.
Right.
And it was, it had nothing to do with the chickens, it had more to do with a property line issue.
So, so, so I guess, I guess that's kind of the issue that's got us here today and caused the problem. And again, as I mentioned a second ago, you guys are well thought of in the neighborhood, everybody, you know, appreciates y'all having there and they enjoy the animals with their children and stuff like that. The problem that follows us into this hole right here is that we're in a platid subdivision and we can't have, I guess you'd call chickens farm animals? Would that be the right word?
Is it a covenant issue?
It's a zoning issue, Steve. It's, it's actually probably both. I, I, I don't know if there are enforceable restrictive covenants where these folks live, I don't know. Uh, but, but it's definitely a zoning issue. I mean, it's clearly, it's clearly prohibited under our zoning context. I will address the question, I, I, the implication is, I wanna know, I wanna see the complaint form so I can figure out who did this. And, and there's a, there is a mechanism, by the way, it's called submitting a Public Record Act request and we, we routinely respond to those. We don't respond to just a demand to see a document, you've gotta submit a public record request form. And so we have ways to do that and they're welcome to do that and, and we can provide the documentation. We have a general standing policy that we're not in the business of just disclosing who complains.
Right.
Right? Because we want, we want folk, folks to feel comfortable about complaining about unsightly conditions or violations of zoning ordinance without the fear of retribution or repercussions. And so, uh, it generally, our policy is, we don't disclose that unless we are forced to through a Public Record Act request. So that would be the way to handle that.
Well, and I, I guess I, I wanna interrupt just for one second, this is not an unsightly area by no means. I wanna mention that, it's clean, it's well kept. The problem that comes down to the board is it's a zoning issue on having the animals there, right? So that, that's what gets us all hung up. There's nothing more than I like to say, keep it there, let the kids keep enjoying it, keep doing what you're doing. The problem that handcuffs the board is, is the zoning issue of having those animals in there.
Yes, violation.
So it, it opens up Pandora's box.
Right.
If you see what I'm saying, as far as opening up everybody else and saying, well, you allowed this to happen. I don't even thi, I don't even think we have the authority, and that's why I'm gonna have to relay back to Slay, to override a zoning ordinance, do we?
Now, without changing your zoning, your zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, the board could entertain a, a revision to its zoning ordinance that would provide authority for this kind of activity to happen here, but.
So sometimes, sometimes we have things where we can do, uh, you know, variances and conditional uses and things like that. That's what we don't have the legality to be able to do here because it's a, it's a zoning issue.
Right.
Right?
And it's, and it's a direct violation, the zoning ordinance says, ye shall not have these, right? It's not, there is no variance from that, it's a violation outright of the language. And so the, the only solution here is for the board to indicate with its decision, recognize that this is a violation and that the next step would be an enforcement through whatever the zoning ordinance provides to alleviate the violation. So that would be, Renee, you have authority to file an affidavit with the justice court and ask the justice court judge in an order requiring the property owners to remove this.
Okay.
Let me ask you a thing, did you say a while ago that y'all bought this like this or did y'all build this?
No, I built that.
Huh?
I built that, no, we bought the property a little over six years ago.
It wasn't on the property?
No, uh-uh, but the, you can't actually see, well, you might, on the right hand side, you can kind of see like this, sorry, a stick that's laying down. Um, that backs up to the back of our property, which is the property owners on the other side, which is actually in the city of Flowood. And all of that property, which is like sixty some acres, is actually grandfathered into livestock. Um, they actually had, had directly behind.
Can you lease a quarter of an acre?
Um, we, we talked to them about that last year, but we also don't wanna get them into a weird situation. Um, like I've got, like, if you guys wanna take a look at it, um, just like the property lines and then like this is, that's our property and then this is all of the property that's back behind us and it's, yeah.
Let, let Slay look at that if you don't mind. And maybe let Renee's office look at the same point.
Because we're on a two acre lot, so we gotta figure it out.
We're just under, yeah.
And that is in the very back of the lot of this, that part of our county.
Yeah, the, the whole issue is that it's, it's located on the lot. And, and so it's, it's covered by county zoning and, and it's clearly violations that we gotta address it. The fact that Flowood borders, um, is, is only helpful insofar as, it's Flowood. Flowood would be the operative entity that would review the land use. This is squarely on us because it's in incorporated county.
Right, we're in the county, we're not in the city limits.
That's correct, so.
You're right.
Uh, that, that becomes problematic. My thought would be that even if they were, by the way, to arrange something with the adjacent property owner, I think that probably would and there was to consider what would be the, uh, impact on the person who would give them permission to relocate that just a few feet. Uh, the problem there is that if it is in fact a grandfathered use, that could be perceived as beyond the scope of the grandfathering and those people may lose their grandfather status with the city. So I would be very cautious about doing anything there. Uh, unfortunately, our hands are absolutely tied. We can either ignore this and run the risk of someone accusing the county of not enforcing its zoning ordinance, which then jeopardizes the entire ordinance, which we don't wanna do. Just turn a blind eye and run that risk, or we can move forward with an understanding that it either has to go or the justice court judge is gonna have to deal with it. Those, that's it, we don't have another option.
Yeah, and I wish I had another option, I do. Uh, I, I'd love to give a variance or some type of approval for you, we just have the authority to do it without changing the entire zoning stuff side of that, so, um.
And not that it really matters, but, and, and I understand everybody else's, like, the term of chicken being livestock and things. Um, I mean, ours are definitely pets.
Sure.
We've got vet bills on them, I've got ESA letters from our doctors because all of our children are diagnosed with anxiety and depression and one of them actually has a seizure disorder, and so we actually have live feed cameras on them, um, so that they can look at them at any point in time because like I said, that's, you know, um, like I said, not that that necessarily helps, but just so that you know that we do have like backing from their pediatricians about them and.
And here's the thing, as I mentioned to you a second ago, it's the last thing I wanna do is see you get rid of the chickens. But for the same side, the zoning ordinance doesn't give us any wiggle room to move on it.
Can I make a motion, if they take this up to justice and plead their case?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the only other thing we can do is say, get rid of them.
Yeah, that's precisely what needs to happen. Uh, it's just referred up to justice and let them.
Have another opportunity.
Let the judge decide.
To get all of your stuff and that is your best.
Yes, sir.
Defense right there, what you can say.
And we tr, if, if we honestly thought that they were a nuisance to the neighborhood or if it was actually a problem, then we would definitely one hundred percent have already removed them from the property, but knowing that we're pretty confident in who has made the two complaints.
Sure.
Like I said, they no longer live in the state. The last complaint, we believe that they made right before they left, just like as a last little, you know.
Parting shot.
And it, it didn't have anything, yeah, and it didn't even have anything to do with the chickens, like I said, it had to do with the property line issue because they had, they had been over, they helped us build the coop. They got eggs, they brought their grandkids over to see them, they would text me if there was a hawk in the neighborhood. And then all of a sudden, when the property came in issue and I put a fence up, they questioned where the fence was and I had to come over, I showed him my property line, he argued that the points weren't correct and so I just kind of gave in to him for a moment. Then they hired a surveyor to come out and my fence wasn't right, I actually own twelve more feet into their yard. And so then all of a sudden, this became a problem. Right, and so did, yeah, and they also tried to shut my home daycare down, which I have had for twenty-plus years, so.
Did they sell their house?
Yes, actually the new owners of that property are right here, so.
How many chickens you have?
Um, as chicken people don't even know, chicken math is a real thing.
Oh, mercy.
I'm just curious, big, big.
Yeah, well, and we actually have, we have several that live in our house, they're completely house-trained, they lived with the dogs, so they live with the cats.
House-trained chickens?
Yes, sir.
They go to the toilet?
Um, well, they tell us when they need to go potty, they'll go to the back door and holler or, I'm not kidding, they do, they tell us when they need to potty.
I may trade my kids for some chickens.
Well, no, I can train a potty, train a kid like faster than I can potty train a chicken.
I believe, hey, I believe, and I'm sure the chicken's more loyal than the kids by the way, so.
But we do, we do, we take our chickens on vacation with us, we've been to the beach, we've been to.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
Alright, so, so again, I want you to understand what we're going to do.
Exactly.
We're going to move it up to Justice Court, which gives you a position to have further discussions on that same side.
No problem.
Um, again, I wish we had some wiggle room, the courts can do what they want to do, so, um.
Nobody's really coming up and fighting it.
And again, when it goes up there, let me know and I'll go with you.
Sure.
May hurt you, but I'll go with you, so.
No problem.
So again, I.
Well, no, they're, they're ESA certified, so actually they.
You could burn some.
Yes, I could have brought one today, but I wasn't sure if that was going to be appropriate.
I'd like to see the chicken, but no, I'm just kidding, don't break the chicken.
They would not, yeah. I mean, I may have to step out and take them potty because they tell me, but like they, no, they.
Alright, so, alright, so, Slay, what I'm going to do, we're going, we're clo, we'll close the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we'll move it up to Justice Court for that discussion up there, but.
Motion.
So a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
You've been very interesting, very interesting and good luck.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Hey, I'm gonna, hey, I'm gonna pass the baton just for two seconds to Brad, just to go through these next couple, I'm gonna walk them out.
Thank you.
Brad, number five?
Paul, Paul Holly, yeah, Brad's already jumping on. Uh, Paul Holly suggested that we explore whether or not we could, we could utilize some drug chickens. Uh, and, and the workaround could be that they're under contract with sheriff provide drug chickens, right?
Yeah, well, if she could teach them to all that others, she might could teach them to.
Yeah, teach them to detect narcotics. Alright, uh, item five is the TT, TT LBL LLC nuisance property at three eleven Cypress Creek Road, this is a District Two parcel, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask for anyone who is here representing TT LBL LLC to step forward, I'm not surprised they are domiciled. Yes, it's tax sale, TT LBL is domiciled in San Diego, California.
I make a motion that we move them up to Justice Court.
What are the problems?
Alright, so, uh, these pictures were taken May nine.
Standby.
May nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, uh, neighbors were calling about, the grass wasn't being cut in the front yard, but they've cut it.
Oh.
Uh, but this is the backyard.
I got you, oh.
Snakes, rats, you know, all the things.
They had quite a party. I got you, I make a motion to declare the nuisance.
Second?
You running the show.
You running the show, Brad. You got a motion and a second.
Alright, alright.
I said I made a motion.
Call, call for a vote, Brad.
Alright, motion by.
Jared.
Jared.
Second by.
Who's second? Gaines.
Steve, yeah.
Alright, all in favor.
I, I, all vote.
Let's, let's close this public hearing.
That hearing is closed too, thank you Brad.
I'm a little rushed, man.
Yeah, you got, you got, I'm gonna let you get your feet up, man.
I wish you didn't have your butt come up.
We're gonna get a cycle going here in a minute.
Alright.
Item six is going to probably end up being the same thing, TT LBL LLC nuisance property, six hundred Jerusalem Church Road, this is a District Three property. Uh, we will open that public hearing and again, I'll call for anyone here representing TT LBL LLC to step forward, Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
We received a complaint about the grass on this property not being cut, uh, July the eighth, that's when these pictures were taken. And I don't think we have any new pictures, um.
Motion, move it up to justice.
Motion, Steve, uh, second.
Second.
Any opposed? See how good he is?
He got it.
Yeah.
Need to call for a vote on that one.
Make, call for a vote. Any opposed?
Alright.
Brad gets more votes, because like when I call for, like, one person speaks, Brad says it, everybody speaks, I don't understand.
They're, they're more afraid of Brad.
I agree with you.
Uh, for the record, uh, item six, uh, that public hearing is closed, thank you Brad.
Alright, go ahead, Dan.
Move on.
Alright, so that's the, that concludes our nuisance properties. So we'll go into item, uh, we don't have any more items. So next meeting, uh, September thirtieth on Thursday, so motion to recess.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. So we move into the actual Board of Supervisors meeting, planning commission's closed, we move into this, we've already had our public comment by Mr. Thrash, so we'll go into item number seven, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir.
Setting public hearings, you may want to do several of these, I think.
I think A, B, and C, Mr. President, would be appropriate to set those as a lump, A, B, and C for September seventh, nine AM.
I'll make it motion.
Alright, so we've got a motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed with the light sign. Item D, Mr. Slay.
Yeah, we may have to pass D while we're pulling together a quick document for you guys, if I could, let's look at item E, and then we'll come back to D, Mr. President, if that, it will work for you guys, we'll pass D and go to E. Uh, E is an acknowledgement that the current service and maintenance agreement between Rankin County and Otis Elevator that provides for, uh, maintenance of our elevators that are located in county-owned buildings, which was entered into on August the eleventh of two thousand and four, and it purports to provide automatic renewals of the contract for successive five-year periods. That actually constitutes an unlawful attempt to bind a successor board supervisors that violates that particular Supreme Court section. What I'm asking you guys to do is to declare the current agreement between Rankin County and Otis Elevators to be a, uh, to be a voidable, voidable and illegal attempt to bind successor boards. We have a, a subsequent elevator agreement with a different company that will provide for the maintenance and we need you guys to declare the current contract to be void because it attempts to bind your, uh, this particular board so that we can move forward with the current arrangements. So I just need a motion to declare it void.
Alright.
Motion.
So motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion? Hey, I do want to say one thing on elevator maintenance, this, I know this is totally off the subject, this is kind of funny. When we're at the Fire Academy, we're testing firemen, right? There's always one question that come up, we had to, we had to address elevator maintenance in the standard, right?
Yes.
So we get the great Mike Word, write an elevator question in each standard. So Word, what do you do in a situation of an elevator problem? Call the elevator repairman, that's an intense right there, so now everybody's been checked off on elevator repair? Number one answer at the Fire Academy on elevator breaks? Call the elevator repairman. Word wrote that question, so now we have his services here, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Word.
Call the elevator repairman.
Call the elevator, hey, that was it, I said, Word, write a question on it, that was his question, call the elevator repairman. It's hard stuff. Alright, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a light sign. Item F.
Yes, sir, if I can, Mr. President, I, I think we're prepared to go back to item D, thank you, brother. Item D is a discussion of potential action on the bids that were received for the Rankin County Health Department renovation project at the WIC facility in Pearl. This is the project where grant funding is being provided to the State Department of Health, it's our building and so we have to be involved in the rental project, so that was put out to bid as per our normal course, we received bids and now we're prepared to recommend a bid award, uh, to you guys to conduct the renovation repair work that at the end of the day, we will be reimbursed by the State Department of Health for the costs associated with the repair. Everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
They're also paying us a stipend from the grant funds for our administrative costs of having to do all this paperwork, okay? So that, we're attempting to cover all of the county's bases on this project. You will not be paying for the rental ultimately, you may have to issue payment to the contractor, but you will be reimbursed by the State Department of Health for those costs. We had two bids that were submitted, one by Hopkins Construction Maintenance LLC and another bid, uh, submitted by MultiCon Inc. Uh, the low bidder was MultiCon Inc. in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That actually is below the renovation cost ex, estimate that was provided by the engineer. Our recommendation and our request, Mr. President, for a motion is to award the renovation bid to MultiCon Inc. in the amount of one twenty-four two fifty-eight and to authorize the county administrator to execute any and all documents associated with the renovation contract.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light sign, so item, I think that was, uh, D passes, on to item F, Mr. Slay.
Yes, sir, item F is a ratification of our Declaration of Local Emergency, uh, that's been enacted pursuant to thirty-three fifteen seventeen due to the impacts of Hurricane Ida. I'm asking that you make your ratification of the declaration effective August twenty-six, eight AM and continuing through September fifteen, twenty twenty-one.
Alright, so the board wishes to entertain a motion.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? Hey, I do want to mention, uh, thanks to Word and Harrison on the same side, and then somehow they drug Keith out in the middle of this mix on the deal. And I do want to also mention at that same point, if there was expenses that those guys had trying to purchase meals and all and stuff like that for those workers that day, which everything was shut down, I want to be sure that gets on their receipts, you got it set for Monday, okay, so you're good on that, so. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light signs, item F passes.
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, beg your indulgence on one item, I think Mr. Gaines may appreciate this update, I received a text communication this morning from the Rankin County Prosecutor, Mr. Shirley, indicating that one of the individuals who had run through a barricade on Stoll Road, Mr. Chappell, who had been arrested for having violated state law by doing that on Stoll Road and causing damage to Stoll Road, appeared in court today uh, for his initial appearance, this is not the trial, this is where he comes forward and establishes whether or not he pleads not guilty or guilty. He asked the prosecutor for permission to plead guilty but refused to pay the, uh, the restitution figure that wa, that we provided to him for the damage to the road that he caused. And so I instructed, uh, without authority, I instructed the county prosecutor to refuse to accept the guilty plea and to set it for trial. And I, I wanted to make you aware of that and I felt like this would be the appropriate place for us to have this discussion so that it's clear to anyone in the community that when the road manager, uh, installs barricades that prohibit public access on a public road, those should be honored. We, we have a reason why we barricaded that off and prohibited access to the public, there's a reason for that. And a lot of times, it's a public safety issue. And so we are attempting as best we know how to get that point out there as clearly as we can, uh, and the best way to do that, we think, is to pursue these kinds of charges vigorously and make it clear that if you run a barricade, you will be prosecuted, if you damage the road, you will have to pay restitution. And so I, I didn't believe that the, uh, that the offer by the defendant to simply plead guilty and pay a twenty-five dollar fine was appropriate under the circumstances given the seriousness of it, and I asked the prosecutor to refuse to accept that plea and to set it for trial.
Alright, you need action from us?
No, sir, that's just a report.
You good?
Thank you.
Alright, item eight, Mr. Keith Hicks. Item eight, what you got?
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have three common items to go over this morning. Item A is the authority for the board president, our new board president, to enter into a member, MOU with the, uh, Department of Finance and Administration, uh, based on Senate Bill twenty-nine forty-eight. Uh, item A is the MOU for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the Gunner Road project, uh, funds provided by the state.
Alright, board wishes to entertain a motion?
Make a motion approved.
So got a motion by Mr. Morrison?
Uh, second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the light sign? Item B.
Item B is, uh, entering into an MOU with DFA, uh, for the use of one million dollars on the Andrew Chapel Road Project, uh, based on Senate Bill from twenty-nine forty-eight as well.
Alright, board wishes to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion?[1587.68] Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign. Item C?
All right. Item C is the MOU with DFA, and this is for our stormwater management program in the receipt of $2 million provided by Senate Bill 2948.
All right, the board wish to entertain a motion?
Make motion approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign. Item C passes. Item D, Mr. Hicks?
We have the agenda provided to you for Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, anybody got any questions on Tuesday?
I have a question. What was C? What was that on?
The stormwater, $2 million provided by the state on the stormwater management plan.
Jay, $1 million to stand up Richland Creek Drainage District, $1 million to implement the stormwater management plan, to construct our watershed plans. That's, Josh Harkins helped us get that money.
$1 million of this is going to Richland Creek?
No, sir. A million of that is to the county to do the work and effort to stand them up.
Okay. All right.
Let's be really clear. That is court work, engineering work, a good bit of legal costs associated with that. It is the effort that we need to get them legitimized so that they can fund themselves going forward.
Okay. All right, anybody got any questions on the agendas on Monday?
For future reference, we ask for an executive session personnel.
Okay. All right, item nine on the docket, additional business, talking about the air gas project.
Yes, sir. Quick update on air gas. It will come as no surprise or shock in any manner to know that whenever you have a project that involves issues with a railroad, you need to add 12 to 24 months to your project timeline. This is the world we live in these days, and no one gets in a hurry at the railroad, apparently, to address issues of track closings, crossing closings, crossing improvements. It is a long, time-consuming, difficult process to get any movement on that. And this air gas project is exhibit A as to what can happen when you involve a project and crossings, railroad crossings. And that's, unfortunately, that's what we're dealing with. What we would like to do, with the board's permission, is to move forward with what we can move forward with on this project, which includes all of the approaches to the crossings without actually going on to railroad right-of-way. We would propose, if the board is willing, to allow this to be done in-house. We have discussed this at length with both air gas, which has a piece of this project that they are also hung up on, and we have discussed it with the road manager, and we believe that there are cost savings that are available to us if we will move this project in-house. The timing works because we are approaching the wetter season, not too far off in the distance here, and so there is the opportunity, given some of the timelines that we're working on, some of the crews that have been hung up on other projects who are going to be freed up because some other projects are being completed, that would allow us to remobilize at this location and get a good piece of this work product done. The clearing and grubbing can be done. Most of the approaches and construction on the road itself can be done, and we are confident that it can be done for substantially less than if we go out to bid. So our ask today would be, may we have authority to proceed with the air gas road construction project staying off of railroad right-of-way, and can we have permission to do that in-house? That's the ask. I have three other quick matters that won't take very long after this one.
All right, so anybody got any objection with that?
Oh, Mike.
Yes, sir.
You got, you got the manpower and the funds to go ahead with this?
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe we do.
I make a motion that we go ahead then.
All right. So a motion by Mr. Gaines to proceed that route?
Second. I'll add it. All right, I make a motion we add this.
So we're adding it? This is a motion to add this to the agenda by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign. So then we'll follow up with a motion by Mr. Gaines to proceed using, utilizing county resources. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign?
Not to belabor the point, the board has already authorized a portion of the county bond issued funds for this project, so the funding can come from the bond issued. Air gas has contributed 50% of their cost contribution, which, by the way, has nothing to do with their access. It's the actual construction of the new approach to the crossing. They've contributed their funds, so there is a pot of money that is already available for the in-house work portion of this that we can draw from without ever getting into the road department budget.
Right.
All right, so that's a good part of this. I should have added that to the, before I ask you guys to take action on that. Mr. President, the second item that I would like to discuss with you is a proposed letter that I had put together, and I am ready to make available for any of you guys to look at. It is a simple thank you letter to Senator Wicker on his current vote with respect to the infrastructure package that passed the Senate. It would be our opportunity to express our appreciation to him for recognizing the deep impact, the important impact that infrastructure funding at the federal level will have, not only on the state of Mississippi, but also on counties like Rankin County. Much of the requests that we have been making to DC in recent days has involved significant transportation projects, some of which, by the way, implicate rail crossings yet again. And for us to be able to move those substantial projects forward, we have to have federal assistance to do it. The costs are beyond our reach to ask our local people to be able to get to. And so we want to express appreciation to Senator Wicker and to thank him for taking the stand that he took and doing so, by the way, in the face of some criticism, and we just want to express to him our appreciation for his willingness to do that. So I have that letter. I would ask you guys to take a quick look at it. It's a short letter, and there's a place for each of you to affix your signature if you're willing to do so.
All right.
The second thing. Second thing I wanted to address with you guys is, just a quick update on our work that you guys authorized as it relates to approaching the state of Mississippi, the legislature, about helping us with our ARPA work, with our ARPA project. You guys told us, and us is your legal team and your engineering team, to go to the legislature and to express to them our desire that they would come alongside and use the state's ARPA matching, ARPA funds to match the county work. And so that effort has been underway now, and I want to give you a brief update. We've had multiple meetings. In each, on each occasion, we've laid out the county's plan, and it has been well received everywhere we've been. I am not in a position, and I would hope that y'all would not ask me, to tell you all of who we've talked to, but we've had numerous important and strategic conversations about this. I wanted to warn you that you will likely hear from some of the folks that we've been talking to, and I didn't want you to be blind as to what in the world are they talking about, okay? So the discussion has been about the county's stated position on the use of the county ARPA money. We've been very clear that we have prioritized the implementation and the pursuit of stormwater management plan-related issues and addressing those issues. We were very clear that this board has prioritized that, and that's where we've already said that publicly. And so we're on record, and we told them, we've made the commitment, and we intend to use the county's ARPA funds to address these issues. They're a high priority. And so we told them, we need the state to come alongside and put its ARPA money alongside ours so that we can fulfill as much of the plan as possible. They have heard that, and they've responded with a statement back to us across the board 100% that they agree that the project needs to be pursued and that they agree that state matching funds would be a good use of the state money to do it.
Okay.
You may hear from elected representatives asking you more questions about that, and you are free to answer those to the best of your ability, or you can direct them our way, and we'll take care of that for you. But additional meetings are coming, and I want you to be aware of that. You may hear about that interaction from us, and that's me, Trey Jones, Joe Wagner. Tim is involved, helping us line all of our projects up and come up with cost estimates. Mike has been heavily involved, as you guys know, trying to help address specific areas where we need to focus our attention. So there's a large number of folks that are involved in this team that I'm talking about, okay? So you may hear more about that. That was just an update.
Hey, let me add one thing to that. When you mentioned Trey, it triggered my thoughts on that. His wife Brenda's mom passed away yesterday.
Yes.
Involved with that.
Actually passed away.
Two days ago, yeah.
Sunday, I think.
Okay, I saw the notice, I think, yesterday at some point, so I just wanted to mention that.
I don't think it would be inappropriate to say she contracted the virus, and we believe that that may have been a contributing factor. So if you get a chance to reach out to Trey, I would appreciate that.
Yep.
He has, he has been heavily involved even since his mother-in-law's death, staying the course and helping us, and so I think it's important for you guys and for me to acknowledge to him how much out of his way he has gone in the face of a personal tragedy.
Well, and he's done it on two different occasions. His father passed several months ago on the same side, so now his mother-in-law on that point right there, so he doesn't miss a beat regardless of what happens.
I really appreciate the effort and the energy that he brings. The third and final update I want to give you, or fourth that I want to give you guys is on our census data, and here's your warning shot. You will be contacted soon, probably today, by CNPD to schedule times for you guys to come and sit down. Is everybody listening? You'll be, you'll be getting a phone call from CNPD, probably today, indicating an invitation to come and sit down and look at the population information that is specific to your districts. So please respond and let them know that you're willing to work with them on a date where that can be done. We cannot have three show up at CNPD together, so there will need to be some coordination. And I will tell you now that it will probably be important for a pair of you to come at the same time because the data relates to what needs to happen between respective districts to get our plan, our redistricting plan, into compliance with federal law. All right?
Have you seen it?
We have, yes.
Do you know how we need to pair up?
You will be told, you'll be advised on the best pairing that would work the best, I think, for everybody. That's not going to be critical or necessary. It just would be helpful if both of you who have contiguous districts can be there, okay? So I believe, just to whet your appetite, there are going to be some very surprised people looking at me right now out of you five when you're told what's happened in your respective districts. I doubt very seriously that what you think is what you're going to find, just FYI. So anyway, that's just to whet your appetite, so when Dave Wade calls you, maybe you'll answer.
All right, next up.
Take his call. That's it.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I ask that you, we have one item of additional business. We ask you to recognize Bridget Herring.
Okay. Come on, Mr. Bridget.
I recognize her. I know her everywhere I go.
I got one of that.
May be done. We had one free pass, I think Bridget took it.
Good morning. This was going to be on the agenda from Tuesday, but we needed to kind of see if we can go ahead and take action. The reverse auction for our tandem dump truck bids just entered at 10:30, and we received one bid from Truck Works. The bid amount was $130,000, and the three-year buyback for, if you got white-on-black trucks, $60,000, and in black-on-black, $65,000. And we just need, Mike and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about it and see where we needed to go with that.
Mike?
You on the floor?
I'm fine with it. I mean, the problem is that we have with trucks nowadays, everybody knows about it. I've talked to other vendors, they're not able to provide the trucks in a timely manner on that. Matter of fact, we'll have, me and Bridget talked about this, we'll have to do this in October for next year's trucks. They won't even make you a truck unless you have a BO from here forward now. So that's the dilemma we're running into with trucks.
I gave him the floor, but we had a 30-day delivery on here just because we're sending some trucks to auction, and I think that's why we received just the one bid because of availability.
And we got communication from other vendors who said, I'm not even going to bother to bid because we can't meet you 30-day deadline. There's not going to be it. So the vendor who has one truck available just happened to have one on the yard and could meet the 30-day deadline for us. Our concern, I think, and it's appropriate to raise this here now, our concern is that the structure of our RFP with a 30-day deadline in the current environment where we know that that's just not achievable, it could set up the county for an argument by the other vendors. You wrote your specs so that only one vendor could get it, okay? And we don't want that to be the case, and that was clearly not our intention. We had a deadline that we can support if ever challenged. We got an auction coming up. We're trying to get ahead of the auction date. That's an ancillary date that has nothing to do with who we wanted to respond to this, but the practical reality is, we could have gotten other vendor participation if we had a longer response time. Instead of 30 days, having a 90-day turnaround, we're likely to have had other vendors who could participate. So our concern was, do you want to proceed with this one bid that's been received and go ahead and take the risk that somebody else could argue about how we handle that? Or would you prefer to simply bypass this one, wait until October, and try to look at how to structure our RFP in a way that makes sense? Totally y'all's call.
And I do want to add that some vendors are saying up to a year out once we place the order. And they're, those are Rankin County vendors that we normally use. There's just COVID, that one part to make that truck work, that's what's, it's just anything that's out there right now.
Okay.
And this truck right here won't be here for very long. It's why we kind of came a few days early.
All right. So thoughts?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Gaines?
You want to go ahead and do that today?
That would be great. If I could do that, start that.
Can I get a motion to add the acceptance of the Truck Works bid for that particular truck? Okay? Let's get a motion to add that, and then we'll authorize the first.
Motion to add this item to the agenda.
All right, so motion by Mr. Bishop to add it to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign? Item passed, so it's added to the agenda. So now, motion to approve, Bishop?
I make motion approve buying this one truck.
Issue check.
An issue to check, Mr. Bishop?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign? All right, so item passes, all done and set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
I've got one more additional business.
I got you on the shot clock like Mike Word.
This is not going to take long.
Go ahead.
As long as you ain't got a lot of questions. But anyway, we've been out there working on Stoll Road during the improvement project that Steve had in the bond issue. We've run into a few little difficulties. We've got the road ready to go. It took a little bit more money to get the road ready because we had some substandard clay out there, issues we had to deal with. I have the money in my budget. It's right at the, in the budget cycle. We've had some weather delays, different things like that. If the weather works, we can proceed forward. I'm just giving y'all a heads up that we can do it. It's just going to cost a little more money than what we anticipated it was going to come.
About $0,300,000, Jerry, to do it, Rock?
Mike, I hadn't said anything because it hadn't been, come to fruition.
Right.
But a friend of mine, or two of them, work in the legislature, and it's way too early to make any promises or whatever, but some of this infrastructure money that will be coming down that we may not be able to get to use on roads, but they may be able to.
Correct.
I'm asking, as a friend, if they will share some of that in some type of rural restoration on some of these more rural gravel roads. And this isn't the first time I've talked to y'all about this, and I'll be, I mean, whatever we can get, I'd be willing to share with everybody equally, however we can do it. Don't know if we're going to be able to or not, but I think that this is the time that we may be at a place that we can get some of these gravel county, existing county roads, some attention that where the water runs across them, you know, where we have drainage and dirt or gravel roads. And I'll just keep y'all abreast that I, I don't mean to say that, it sounds real promising, but a lot of times it sounds better than it actually is.
Yes. We've treated this dirt out here with the rains we have, and we kind of need to get asphalt on it. That's the only reason I'm moving forward with this. And like I said, I'm not asking y'all to move money around. I've got it in, in my budget. I've got to move it around in my budget, but we've got the money to go ahead.
What about the 300?
I've got the money in my budget. It's just in a different line item. It's in construction, it's in construction, Jay, and we won't use that money up this year.
We actually had mud riders to go out and tear up a lot of work that Mike and the road crews spent probably two weeks getting prepared after the rains came through. I don't know why we can't catch them when other people can. It just, we can find it, find that they tore things up and everything else, but we just, we did get a tag number from a civilian who put eyes on them, and we're going to try to do whatever we can, follow that course, but it just baffles me how you can hear them for miles. You know, at midnight, it roars through those woods.
Yes.
But we just never catch one. I mean, other than a civilian driving.
They're off the road and get stuck.
Yep, yep. And then they say they were just traveling to go, you know, get somebody, pick somebody up and whatever.
I talked to Mr. Slay about it, and I've got to get back with that lady today, but I think she's willing to go forward with everything, Steve.
Good.
So, and she is.
I mean, I think we've got to push it every time. If we don't, then we're just.
Yeah, and it's not only our, it's not only our gravel. Yeah, and it's not only our, it's not only our gravel roads. I mean, it's other roads. I mean, we've got roads and ditches that people done got to where they, everybody wants to go mud ride and.
Shoulder of the road.
Shoulder of the road, and it just costs us more money to fix roads, and they end up tearing up the roads, you know?
Yep.
But.
All right, Mike, what do you need? Anything?
I just, I wanted to give y'all a rest of what I was doing, if everybody was okay with it. Me and Keith will get together, and we'll move the money around in my budget to withstand this. But what I was trying to do was get this done and end the budget cycle, and we're running close on funds right here.
Y'all don't have to take action on that.
Right. It's just a million dollars to y'all what I'm doing.
All right. Executive session, Keith?
Thank y'all.
I make the motion to go into executive session for personnel reasons.
All right, so motion by Mr. Gaines for personnel in executive session?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign? So executive session. It is.
Can I go into it?
Is Janice here? Where were you? I've been missing you. Did you slip in? All right, I'm sorry. What's the motion, Janice?
To go into.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Nobody want to give me one. Motion by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor say aye.